...to the side of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Roll call members?
Yeah, more.
Here.
Trusty Tomley. Trusty Martin is excused. Trusty Tomley.
Here.
Trusty Garrett. Here.
Okay, at this time of the day, do you motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
May I motion?
Second?
Second.
Second. Any additions or corrections? Shot. All in favor of approving minutes as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Minutes are approved. Now, the presentation, petitions, communications, notices, and general question paper, period for members of the community. Would anybody wish to speak? Stand up ahead for yourself.
Sure. Hi, good evening. Tom Grisenda, resident, 1911 Elm Street. One of the questions I would like to bring up is, we understand there's been a property transfer at the Elm Lane School. Last year, it seemed to be an issue as far as maintaining existing conditions. And we know that the field, lawn, whichever, was maintained once. Is that something that we're going to be looking for again this summer? Or is there going to be more pressure on the new individuals to maintain existing conditions?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because, yes, we are going to try to pursue people that have let their property go as far as like the lawns and whatever. Yes, we're not happy with that either. I see mowed it, but he only mowed half of it. There's a new owner.
He maintains a small section.
Well, yeah, but it's residential area and it should be maintained if, you know, breeds insects, stall animals, undesirable rodents. So, yes, we intend to pursue that further.
One other small issue, I'd like to say, I do like the website that is. I understand it's there, you can access it. Is it going to be more frequently updated with current minutes? Unless right now, it stops at February of 2010.
Yeah, I just have to get them over to our little girl that does it, so. I didn't realize it had been that far back, but I thought I sent them recently. Maybe she didn't get them on there, but we'll check it.
Yes, we're very pleased with the website.
Oh, it's a great site. It's very informative. I like to check on it, and it was just a little disappointing to tell you. I want to see what the last meeting minutes were, and I understand there's a timeframe.
That's good to know someone's looking at it.
I'd always want him to come to the meeting as a person.
When we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we were talking about the school this afternoon, just so you know. We had a discussion outside about it, so, yeah.
It's just, you know, I understand there's a fine line between commercial and residential. You have a commercial building of that property who maintains their property beautifully, and this is slipping. Like you said, insects, rodents, just these village appearance. Hope that there's more pressure on the new owner, that they understand that, what their obligations are for that property.
They're 100 percent for us. Is there anyone else that wishes to add just more?
Some more. I've been out walking, and I guess I'm following up the same topic he's on. I made a list of places, a quick list, although I'm going to get out there and look even closer, but most of them are grass, but there are some with debris. So, I don't know if you guys need to review it and then pass it on to the coenforcement officer or whatever, but I got copies here, so.
We'll take those, yeah.
It's a big eyesore in the village to have that. I think it's not that expensive to maintain their property.
And the board is 100 percent behind that.
We need to get after them because isn't there like a process? You send a letter, and then they have so many days and it's like to get them mowed so something's over.
Right.
But if we do it now, I should say, on the get-go, well, I think we'll have better results. We're just starting off. We've just got to get it stopped snowing.
I think what our plan is going to be that, you know, we're going to follow through with the time periods, and we're going to go ahead and maintain the property. We're going to hire somebody to come in, do the property, and add it to the tax rules. That way, I think people will start getting a message. They can get a mow it themselves, or we're going to get somebody to mow it. Because it's the end of the summer. What's happened with some of these properties, we get after them, they delay as long as possible, and the next thing you know, it's winter again, and it never gets done. So, yeah, we're very much aware of that.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Identify yourself. I know you, but.
Can you read it, Kenan? I have two issues. I was wondering what they decided to do about the water bill that we got last month?
Okay, we have to discuss.
That was supposed to come back up this meeting.
Okay, we have to discuss that.
And the other issue is, I was told that I had a problem with my sewage, and it was my problem, so I had to have my whole yard dug up, and the pipes replaced and everything. And come to find out, it was the town's problem. It was blocked in the road, about 150 feet down the road. It cost me $1,211 to get it done, and I want to know if I'm going to be getting any reimbursement for that, since it wasn't my problem.
I was first to hear of this, so I don't know.
Mr. Martin, I spoke with Mr. Martin on this. And I've spoke to.
Did you shed any light on this, Larry?
Yeah. How far did Chad go when he went from underneath your trailer to your?
He went down to the road. It was blocked, but it don't block downhill.
He went 10 foot from the front of the trailer, he said.
No, he didn't. He told me he was right next to the road.
And you had the old clay wrap pipe, tar paper pipe, and it was all, all came apart.
Okay, I've got witnesses.
And it was full.
I haven't got him with me today because he just came out of surgery, but I do have witnesses that will tell you what it is, and he wrote me a note here.
Okay, maybe provide that information to the board, and I can't take any action at the moment, but we'll look into it. I guess I can probably see that.
Well, Mr. Martin came up, and instead of putting us, putting me into the new line that they got, they stuck me right back in the old line. It's been plugged twice since I got there. And it was plugged four years ago, and then it was plugged up again this time. And the reason mine is broke is because of the pressure of the buildup from the road, because I didn't have any sewage or anything in that ditch until we got right out and broke it loose out by the road.
When they installed your meter out in front of, well, you weren't there at the time. When they installed the meter, whoever installed the meter up there, they cut the pipe and they put a piece of plastic with two rubber fur coats.
And that's what blew.
And the rubber, that is not the village. That is on your property.
I know, but it was plugged down below on the road, 150 feet down the road.
No, it wasn't plugged down the road, 150.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you. I've had enough of that.
This isn't going to lie. We'll get to the bottom of it, and we'll make do with it.
It's going to get to the bottom of it because it cost me big bucks to have that fixed. They did it in the pouring rain. Larry stood there. His two guys sat in the truck. Yes, they did.
No, they didn't. They were down, they were down. I'm not going to argue with that.
No, I'm not going to argue with you.
Larry, let this begin and have him say it, and we'll investigate it after, okay?
I would appreciate it being investigated because I'll take it farther if I have to.
Okay, well, whatever. We'll look into it. That's all I can promise you at this point. Look into it. When did this happen? This past month, or?
Yes.
Okay. We will look into it, and we'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other people that wish to speak at this time?
Yep.
Steve Southwood, Champlain. John Cooper and I are here somewhat representing the town. I guess representing the town with regard to the new proposed DOT project on the former Maislin property up on the West Service Road. As you guys probably all know, but I think we should go through it quickly, the state has decided to use eminent domain to take that property to build what's called an $8 million DOT inspection station. And a piece of that project is to provide, hopefully, water and sewer facilities. And the discussion that John and I had last week, and I'm sure you guys have thought of this, but I kind of like to see us get together to try to look again at the feasibility of a water district up there for the West and the East Service Road. Mickey's done a bunch of research on how this all started back in the late '80s, and there was an attempt to establish a water district back then, but it never got to the point of it actually being established and created. Tomorrow night, we're having a meeting, and I'd like to invite you to attend, and we're going to go over the project, look at what was done in the past, and update all the information, and move forward with the idea that we want to establish a water district up there, and then try to enlist the state and the federal government to help us to try to establish an actual loop up there with construction of water and sewer for all the businesses. Again, as you all know, that's one of the prime areas for development, and with the lack of water and sewer on the West Service side, we have really no hope of drawing big business into that area. And because of the real high cost of construction of water and sewer, this looks like probably our last attempt at trying to put groups together, being the village, the town, the state, the federal government, and any kind of funding that we can get to try to get this thing really going. So, again, I'd like to invite you to the meeting tomorrow night, which is going to be Bernie Carr's going to be there, and Cliff Harbor going to be there?
No.
Okay. Cliff Harbor is the outfit that's actually doing engineering for the DOT. I'm just hoping up to any questions.
What time is the meeting stay?
Seven o'clock. And Mickey, do you want to add anything?
No, that's basically it. I mean, we're trying to establish a sewer and water district up through the East Service Road, West Service Road, like Steve said. We just want everybody to be aware of what we would like to do and get some input from everybody.
Well, I think this is a very opportune time to leverage our input to see what we can get from the state if we are going to put that facility in there. I know so many times in the past, we've let these kind of opportunities slip away. And, you know, I think if we work together to make sure that they're aware of what our concerns are and to help us in any way that they can, persuasion or encouragement, this is a good time to do it because, you know, that is an area where there is development possibilities, and if there are customers there, it's not a, we build it and hope they come. It's there, and it pays for itself in a very short period of time, right? I agree, Steve. I think you're 100 percent right. You need to be on top of this and maybe do something that would be advantageous to both us and the state up there. I think you agree, and John.
If we could possibly get that hooked up, that would stop all the problems of water contamination. That would raise the pressure up there. Everybody would gain on this thing, but we have to get together and make up a presentation with these people, see what the heck we can do.
Well, it's a good, I think it's an excellent idea, but I know I'll try to attend, and I think anyone else is.
I'm not sure.
Be able to.
We can update.
Right back.
We'll be more than willing to update you with anything that we gather out of it. I just didn't want us to have this meeting and not talk to you guys first about.
Thank you.
You wanting to be a part of it because.
Well, no, I think we all need to work together because I think we all have the same goal, which is creating more customers to assist us.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And I guess we're being proactive through James.
Yeah. I like the sound of this.
I guess we'll proceed with Mickey's report. Go to the spot enforcement.
I don't know if I should hide it or not. The first thing I'll address is the issues concerning the grass and all that. I was working with Donna today. I found a form in one of our zoning books, a notice of violation. And what I intend to do is to basically, we're going to modify this to add the stuff from the village on it, and I'm just going to send it to the people that have the violations, the list, whatever you have, and whoever I find. And it's basically going to be a five-day notice. In other words, within five days, they've got to cut the grass. If you're going to have somebody do it, then, I mean, we need to work that out. Otherwise, I was just going to issue a court appearance because we went through this last year. You start out in May, it's October before, you're done playing the games with the timeframes and everything else that goes on, and then there's no end to it. The one thing I do need from the board, though, is I need clarification on what you want me to send as far as the types of lots, I guess. I know the school was mentioned, where they apparently, they seem to feel that around the schools that they need to cut, they don't need to cut the rest. Now, I'm gathering here that you want the rest of the field cut, as you did last year. Now, does this apply to everybody in the village, or because you have the Horizon Heights, you have where the independent products building is, that field there around the church? There's some areas with large tracts of land, I guess is what I'm trying to get at. And, I mean, how often do you want these people to cut this stuff? Because when I send them all that, I'm going to be very clear with them that if it's six inches is the height, then it's not a brush hog in the spring and a brush hog in the fall.
Exactly.
So, you need to tell me exactly what you want as far as that goes. Are you looking just for lots with houses on it, or vacant lots, or, you know?
Well, anything that's our, that's our law.
Within the incorporated?
Yeah.
The corporate limits of the village?
There can't be exceptions just because they have large.
No, no, I just, because.
Right.
I'm going to get these arguments. I want to know when I tell them, I said, no, the village board made the decision that anything within the corporate limits of the village is going to be cut. So, that's.
What is the current length?
Six inches.
Is it six?
Yeah.
Can we reduce that?
Well, you'd have to change it, or we'll have to do that.
Well, that's pretty high.
But honestly, I mean, there's, anything out there is six inches now that has not been cut since spring.
Oh, yeah, I know.
They made it over the weekend with the cool weather and the rain and all that. But that is the intent behind that. I do have a couple of court cases going on with property maintenance issues. Those are wiggling their way through the court, so we'll see what's going to happen with that.
Yeah, I might get a clarification on that, but I believe after 30 days, we can come in and have somebody do it. I mean, as long as we serve them notice, and we can go through the court system, which is what we want to do also, but also after 30 days, according to the village code, I read it before it came over, after 30 days, we can prove to have somebody come in and maintain the lot until it'll be placed on the tax rules.
Right.
We'd like to get it done much quicker than that. 30 days is a long time.
Well, what I ran into today, riding around, is some of these places are vacant. You know, they're for sale by real estate companies. The people are gone, so those are going to be challenges. You might end up cutting the grass on those if the real estate companies don't, because I'm sure the people are long gone. I mean, how are we going to track these things down? You can put it on the taxes, but, you know, it's a process that we have to go through.
Well, I think everybody would agree, we want to focus on the ones where there are traceable to someone who owns property that, you know, we want to do all of them, but we want to concentrate on the ones that we might be successful with first. Well, actually, all of them.
Well, they all, I mean, I can't pick and choose, that's the thing.
No, we want to do all of them.
Right.
And put the notices out there, and we'll take it from there.
Yeah, well, like I said, this is going to be, it's an official notice of violation with a five-day turnaround. In other words, you've got five days to cut your grass. If you don't do it in five days, then I'll issue the, you know, citations, the court appearance. And the only problem with that is, once I do that, I got to date those things out at least three weeks ahead of time because of the way the court works, and people have to be notified and so on and so forth, so.
And do we have to give them 30 days each time before we mow the lawn, or once we've given them that 30-day period, we now can maintain it?
No, once you go beyond the 30 days, then you have the right to maintain it until such time as they can prove to you that you will maintain it. I want to get a clarification from the village lawyer, but that's what it says in the code.
Okay.
Until such time as they step forward, it's maintained.
Right.
So, by mid-June, we should be able to get everybody up to par?
Well, I'm hoping before that, because by mid-June, it's going to be ready.
Oh, I know.
We can't, we can't let, we got the bazaar again, and we can't let that go.
But is we have to give them 30 days, we're saying?
Well, there's, well, no, we can give citations, and some of these people will comply because they will have to.
Right, oh, yeah, sure.
Most of them will.
That's the worst case, the 30 days.
Yeah, I even seem to think that the real estate companies will take care of it, then they'll collect on their end because they, you know, they don't want to have letters of violation on files or whatever, because they ask that a lot by the.
Thing is, if you're selling a house for somebody, they should keep the lawn up anyways.
Well, they should, but they don't think they can get away with something, they will, so, you know, if you don't push it.
But most of the places up for sale are Red Bull real estate companies, so they should get on it immediately with a letter.
So, other than that, I mean, there's a couple places in the village there with, you know, property maintenance issues, and a couple of them are court cases and so on and so forth. Other than that, just issued a few permits, no houses yet. Might have one here, I guess. No new businesses far as zoning goes. Other than that, about it.
Will you be able to get all the letters out for the violations of grass by the end of the week?
Well, yeah.
So, my neighbors and I should stop mowing the place across the road from me then, huh?
Well, that's been a 10-year deal with that house.
Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't use this.
No, what happens is, they keep selling it. So, now I got a new owner again, and, you know, these guys, they promised you the world they're going to do this, this, and this. They don't do anything. So, again, he's going to get a notice of violation, and.
That's not you.
No, I know. At least that's on my mind, or.
Thanks for warning us, Steve.
Yeah. Village appreciates that.
Does that affect the water supply?
No.
Okay. Was there any other public comment?
Well, I came in late, so I don't know what you were, you mean on that particular issue?
No, no, on any issue.
Your issue, you have an issue?
Well, this is the time where people from the public can speak. After this time, you can't, so this is the time to speak up.
Oh, okay. Well, my only issue was, I had heard that there might be a poss, an issue.
Okay, can you identify yourself?
Oh, my name, Diane Brockway. I live at 42 Meadow Lane.
Okay.
About the fire hydrant at the end of the street was, I know there's been some talk about maybe moving the fire hydrant, and I just was wanting to say, I would hope it doesn't get moved, because if there's any, if it gets moved from that end of the street, where there's, I don't know where the other fire hydrant would be for our street.
The fire hydrant is getting moved, it's getting moved, but not from the end of the street. It's going to get moved to the left side of the street so we can make a turnaround.
Oh, okay. I just didn't want it to get moved from the area itself.
It's going to stay there, but right now, the way it is, it's in the center of the road, and you got to get pulled down and back in somebody's driveway or back all the way up Meadow Lane on the church street. So, we want to make it more safety conscious, and we're going to turn around down there. Mr. Hicks gave us to go ahead and.
Oh, okay. I just, I just didn't.
I'm just moving it to the side of the road instead of the center.
I thought the meeting was later, I didn't realize it was.
Best thing to do when you hear something like that, is call right here at the office.
Well, I just found out the other day, so I thought I'd come right in.
Logic.
Okay. Want me to go now?
No, you can stay if you want.
Oh, okay.
You can go if you want, or you can stay if you want. It's okay.
Okay. So, move on to mayor's report.
I got this tomorrow, so I'll let you guys. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Marv Jarvis for many years of service on the zoning board and appeals. Volunteers like you are hard to come by. We really appreciate the service that you have given to the residents of the village. I'm sure I echo everybody on the board on that, but I know these are really low-paying jobs. Thankless jobs. We really appreciate that. Okay, the spring pickup days for this month are going to be May 17th and 18th, am I correct there? And just want to remind everybody that we not pick up any loose brush. All brush must be in manageable bags, manageable clear bags, and no other debris in the bags. And everything should be on curbside by 7:00 a.m. the scheduled day. I think everybody's been very good at this. Everybody's caught on. It's great. It's working well. We'll be sweeping streets this month, there's spring cleanup. Just reminder to buy tines if it's dry, which I haven't seen yet, but if it ever does get dry, there may be some dust here and there, so just be on the lookout for that. And we have a request for annexation to the village from Mike and Kathy Duca. Just wanted to everybody, to everyone that we have that. And that's all I have. Have we reports and trustees? Trusty Tomley?
Very short. Just in speaking with Larry tonight, trying to get a handle on when we're going to start on Elm Street for the spring paving. Hopefully, weather cooperating, and it stops snowing here in the North Country, we can start getting going on some of that stuff. It was good news to hear, though, that the asphalt has gone down in price, which is.
Yeah, asphalt went down to $39 a ton.
Almost $20, almost $20 a ton?
Yeah, it was 58.
So, that's, that's good news, good for the budget. So, just looking forward to, you know, depending on what that comes in at, maybe being able to do some other work on another street. And looking forward to all this spring cleanup. We're just starting to, with Chris Tony, much out.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. Trusty Tomley?
I haven't even worked that out.
Okay, very good. Trusty Garrett?
Just a reminder that the bazaar is less than three weeks away. Lots of new things this year, as I've reported in the past month, but for those of you who didn't hear it the past two times, we've got a new ride company coming in with nine fabulous rides. We have a new bow and arrow game, and we also have a new wheel game. The Catholic Daughters are doing a deluxe dessert and homemade wheel. So, if they win the top prize, they get to pick a very fancy homemade dessert. Lower prizes are canned goods, jellies, jams, pickles, et cetera. So, should prove to be very exciting. The Catholic Daughters do have a wonderful reputation for fabulous desserts, so it should be fun, just a little something different to take the place of the liquor wheel we lost a couple of years ago, which has been a devastation. However, this is more appropriate to our cause, having a dessert wheel. The ride company is also looking for people who want to work. They would just as soon give the business, the jobs to local people for the weekend, so if anyone's interested, stop in at the village office and leave your name and number, and I will pass that on to the ride company. The ride company is Amyland, coming out of Vermont. The rides are just gorgeous in comparison to what we've had in the past, so I'm very excited about the event. The parade will be at noon on Sunday. On Saturday at noon, we will have our auction with Steve Brody as the auctioneer, so that should be exciting. If anyone has any new or slightly used items that they would like to donate to the bazaar, we are taking donations again on Saturday morning from 9:00 to 12:00. We also are in need of glass items such as wine glasses, coffee cups, any kind of fancy glassware if you want, or just those very special mugs that you get as gifts that you want to seek on. We're happy to take them to the dime pitch booth. So, if you are unable to do drop-off on Saturday, just call the school, and we're taking drop-offs pretty much any time of the day, as long as the school is open, so we can use help there. If anyone is interested in working the bazaar, you can contact me at 298-2829. Leave me a message. Please don't just say, hi, this is so-and-so, call me back. You need to leave a very detailed message for me this time of year because I need to give you an answer in case you're not there, because I won't have time to keep playing phone tag. So, I will work with you as best I can for whatever your needs, wants, or desires are. And I think that's it. We have music this year on Saturday. DJ is, oh, I'm drawing a blank here. DJ Etier will be having his music on Saturday night from 5:00 to 9:00. And on Sunday, we are having the North Country Squares are doing a demonstration for an DJ Etier, it will be having his music on Saturday night from five to nine, and on Sunday, we are having the North Country Squares are doing a demonstration for an hour, which should be kind of fun. We also will have the barbecue dinner, um, serving Sunday, starting at eleven o'clock. Oh, and a big thing this year, sorry to ramble, everybody, I know you wanna get out of here, uh, on Saturday, between twelve and five, we are having a bracelet day. You can ride all the rides you can in five hours for just fifteen dollars, this is huge savings, so parents with kids, it's the best time to, uh, bring them, you can drop them, and they can ride rides for five hours while you come spend your money at the auction. So, should be lots of fun. Oh, and a new food booth, we are having smoked grillad, G-R-I-L-O-A-D, it's, uh, uh, some delectable meat from Canada, we have one of our, uh, parents that will be doing this, uh, smoked booth, so it's another addition, kind of just spicing things up a little bit. And that's it.
Thank you.
It's a great community event, so we'll get everybody there.
I turn a motion to suspend the meeting and proceed with the, uh, public hearing on the cross connection law, local law number one of two thousand ten.
Thank you, Mr..
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the meeting is in recess, and is there any public comment on cross connection law? Okay, now, I guess a new motion to return the meeting.
Excuse me, there, could you take a copy of that me after your meeting?
Oh, you could have it right now, actually. This is, this is a cross connection, I, I can give you a...
No, 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 I mean, what she gave you.
Oh, oh, we can do that right now, so...
I need to enjoy it.
This is your original copy? Very good. We'll give you a copy of this, too. Okay, so, bring the meeting back into session.
Um, second motion, proceed the meeting back into session. And the, uh, end the hearing.
And end the hearing, that's good.
And second, Kim, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, this time, I, I would, uh, add a motion to approve local law number one, two thousand ten, cross connection control law. And I think everybody has stopped it. Okay. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve local law number one, two thousand ten, cross connection control law.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second motion. Uh, is there any discussion?
Yeah, just an understanding, who, who has answers on this?
Oh, what are you asking?
Yeah.
How so?
Is, is there some kind of, um, what I'm understanding from, from reading this, is this a device that we are requiring all businesses to, uh, put in, and is there a time period this must be implemented, and what is the cost, so that if those, it puts a huge financial burden on them? Do they have a time period to be able to come up with those funds?
That cross, that cross connected is, is from somebody, it's so somebody don't hook two places in the one line, have a back feed, that, uh, it also has the backflow devices in there, like any businesses. Say, for instance, the funeral pilot.
Right.
When I went, they had one, one, uh, setup in where they did the embalming and stuff, but there wasn't one on the main line coming in, so, I mean, I told Chad, he did it right off. It's mandatory, every, any business has to have it, and, and, and while we're on this subject, any backflow or check valves, they're supposed to be inspected once a year, and they're supposed to give a certificate of approval to the village. And right now, that isn't being done, but it is, I got that from the health department, and we have to do it. So anybody that doesn't have one in, have to have one, so yes, I'll be knocking on doors.
What is the cost for them to do this?
It, it all depends, I, I mean, a, a, a check valve to go on, just a three-quarters water service, probably sixty, eighty dollars. They can go up to four hundred dollars, they're big businesses. But it's mandatory.
Is there a lot of businesses that are in violation of this?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But there, mo- most of the new businesses, we require them to put them in, but right now, we also, if somebody's putting in a new house...
Right.
We haven't put one in at the same time, so, just that you cut the ones that's been here a long time.
Part of the building code, that any new structures have backflow devices on?
Okay.
Yeah, this was picked up on our annual inspection.
Yeah, I saw that.
And, uh, it's required, it's not, they said...
No, I understand it's required, I just was, you know, what timeframe do they have, I didn't know how expensive it was, because, you know, you're thinking of like, a lot of these businesses that are struggling, and, you know, you don't wanna push them over the edge with a ten thousand dollar project.
Most generally, they're not, they're not real expensive.
I believe in the annual water report, that by the fifteenth of June, two thousand ten, we have to have something...
That's what I thought it was, okay.
Larry, any of the businesses that the health department would be inspecting, would they be checking for this, or is this going to be our responsibility?
Restaurants, restaurants and stuff, no, um, the health department will do an inspection, but because we supply them the water, we're the public's water, we need to make sure they have, if not, well then, they're in violation.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, trustee Jombley?
Aye.
Justice Jombley?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
And Mayor Moore, aye. Now, the report of court treasurer?
Everyone's been copying with their expense and revenue reports for April two thousand ten.
This time, I'm issuing a motion to pay the abstract.
I have, um, three bills that need to be added on.
Okay.
Um, one's come out of A, fourteen ninety point four, North Country Labor for Negotiations, two hundred and twenty dollars. We have A, nineteen twenty point four, the NICOM two thousand ten, two thousand eleven dues, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And we have our second quarter payment, um, to the town for the code enforcement, um, A, eighty, ten point one, for two thousand twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Add a motion to, uh, read those bills?
An inclusion.
Motion by Kim, the second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, trustee Jombley?
Aye.
Justice Jombley?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, uh, this time, Monita, do you wanna read the vote, uh, read the transfers, end-of-year transfers that you made?
To A, thirteen twenty-five point two, treasury equipment, five dollars, to A, thirteen twenty-five point four, treasury contractual, three hundred and forty dollars, to A, fourteen twenty point twelve, law bond council, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, A, fourteen twenty point four, law contractual, nine hundred and ten dollars, A, eighty, ten point one, zoning personal services, four hundred and thirty dollars, A, ninety, forty point eight, employee benefits, workman's comp, three hundred and forty dollars, A, nineteen twenty point four, special items municipal dues, ten dollars, from A, fourteen forty point one, engineering services, personal services, twenty-five hundred and seventy-five dollars. To F, ninety-four, ninety forty point eight, employee benefits, workman's comp, one hundred and forty dollars, F, ninety-seven thirty point six, bond anticipation notes principal, eight hundred and thirty dollars, from F, fourteen forty point one, engineer personal services, nine hundred and seventy dollars. To G, eighty-one twenty point one, sanitary sewers, personal services, six hundred dollars, G, ninety forty point eight, employee benefits, workman's comp, two hundred and ten dollars, from G, fourteen forty point one, engineering services, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, do we want to make motion to make those end-of-year transfers?
So moved.
And a second, Tom, any discussion?
Uh, I just have a question, for the bond anticipation notes, why were we off on that?
Because we, we elected not to, not to renew it every year to pay bond council, so we renewed it three years, so you had to divide the remaining balance by three instead of four.
Okay, great, this is excellent, I think it's our lowest ever, for moving money, huh? We've the end.
Okay, uh, can we go further discussion, trustee Jombley?
Aye.
Justice Jombley?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, now move on to reporter superintendent?
Uh, I'll have a copy of my work report. We had a few problems, uh, up on Meadow Lane, that we had new appeals and stuff, uh, and, uh, at Miss McKinnon's, when they did the sewer the first time, they went out about ten foot, and when they dug it up, it was the, the old tar paper pipe, and it was, it looked like this here. And we have a thing that we found in garden holes, stick in there, if there was a, we couldn't get that in there, we tried to get it unplugged, so they wouldn't have to dig it all the way up. Uh, and while, you, they went to, the lines went down the side of the road, the teeth, uh, I hired Chad to come up with his sewer jet thing, but ours is too big to get in there and clean the line out before they hooked it back up. So there's a, a costly fee for ninety-five dollars to, to clean that line out.
And pours?
Yes. Started to clean up some of the streets, we took the sander off today, cut the top off that, and we're gonna put, take one of the old drain mat machines, the stainless steel, and fix it so the sand doesn't fall down in the box of the truck. Dug up the meter pit up on East Service Road, and I have some quotes on, on meter pits, I'll take you the copy of that after. I like to get a set price that you'll give me to purchase a meter pit, because I don't wanna wait another month to get the pit in, the holes dug, and I got fence around that, and my quote's only worth from two thousand dollars to sixty-one hundred dollars.
Instead of one, it's gonna...
That's for the border, I also have to get a backflow, uh, put on that meter, because there's not one on it, so, I like to set an amount to...
Yeah, I think under new business, we'll wanna bring that up, uh, because I, I know we're all anxious to get that finished, so...
That's such a big discrepancy in the dollar now.
Correct.
Huge, but why?
Well, we can do this any minute.
I'm comparing apples to apples. Say, we're gonna, we're gonna sweep the streets and, and get that cleaned up, we gotta finish handing out the annual water quality reports. And right after the, the parade and stuff's over, we're gonna start digging up on Elm Street. I got Tom Sears come last week, and I went for a ride with him, we checked it, tar's down, really down, so we can probably do a lot more, and he suggested a few things to do on the street to save us money. Uh, he's gonna send a guy up, one of the guys that does it all the time, he's gonna walk through with it, with me, and we'll go from there.
When you say digging up, you mean like moving the curbing and...
I'm gonna take that curbing and that sidewalk out of there.
Storm drains?
Yeah.
Resetting them or whatever it is?
We gotta reset them, there's a few we're gonna have to redo, uh, he, he does, they're, they're paver now, will do a dip along the side of the road and put tar, so if we wanna do a dip, and then put tar down the side, he'll do that, so. And he suggested that we, the roads that we did, if we have any cracks in them, the rubber seal them.
Right, that's good. Now, will we be able to, uh, fix a little bit better that dip at the end of Prospect? You know, as you're coming off Prospect down to Elm, depending on how you cut your car and how low your car rides, you can scrape there. Will this fix that or make it worse, I mean, you actually just gotta get raised up a little bit there, but...
It's gonna, it's gonna, what we'll have to do is go around that DI and make more of a slope.
Right.
Raise it a little bit, because it, it does...
Yeah, I think the water kinda pools there and creates an issue, that's why it's dipped, so...
Well, that's why in front of the funeral home, that tar is coming right out of there, that hump.
Okay.
That's my goal, to get that.
With your sweeping, is there any way, um, I noticed they came down chestnut, and now, you know, there's a massive buildup in the yards, is there any way to avoid that, because what's gonna happen, I think, is homeowners are just gonna sweep that back into the yard, and then into the road, and you're gonna have to come by a second time.
Yeah, they just pick up the worst of it.
Okay, so they're gonna go by another time?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back through, uh, after you sweep it back into the road.
Okay. I haven't done that, but, you know, I'm curious, if, if that what people should do, are you coming back again?
Are you sweeping it on, off the street onto the road?
No, they, they're going front with the loader, so then some of it does go to the side, it's just the way the room goes.
Right.
But we have, we have the loader in front of it, and then we back up with the loader, and it sweeps into the loader, they'll get the worst of it.
Can you go back and get that windrow that's left, though?
I'm sure, yeah.
'Cause that, 'cause that actually creates a problem, I mean, 'cause if you, if that, if it doesn't get swept by the homeowner, then you, now you've got a means of trapping water on the street, because the water won't run to the drain.
That's why, and a lot of, what we're probably gonna have to do, like some of the sidewalks, I'm gonna go down with the bucket, the tractor that's a little wider, and take the soil off the side, because that's why everything's breaking up, because the water's pooling there. So, and we're gonna have to go down the sides of the roads and cut backs on, I mean, that's what we have to do, like we did over on South Street.
Well, the state just did a nice job on Elm Eleven, that's exactly what they're doing is...
And it looks like heck at first, because you see...
I was wondering what they were doing.
But it's gotta be done, because you keep building up, the water pools there.
Really doing so.
Larry, I, I got a question for you, on number three, um, do we have any recourse? If the homeowner won't let you in to inspect?
Uh, well, it's in the code that they have to let us in, but...
But if they're not, what's our recourse?
Uh, I've called one place three times, and, well, we can have the sheriff come have them let us in, or, you know, give them the timeline, if they don't shut the water till he lets us in.
Really true.
Not sure if we can do that.
No, but if, but if we have broken meters and we're trying to get everything fixed, let's...
I think we have to force them to open the door for us and let us in, it's only a few minutes.
Ten minutes.
Are they people that are there, you know, or is it just being a...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's maybe what we need to do.
Is that something that Mickey can do as far as coenforcement?
That's, that's the village's...
No, okay.
There's only two left, I mean...
I know, it's a huge...
That's cats and trash, that's all they do.
And I bought, I bought a bunch of, uh, ducks and repaired the twenty-five meters that we took out, and cleaned them all, and rebuilt themself.
Excellent, excellent. Um, and I know this is a sore subject, and I know we've been over it, but I just really wanna bring it up again, uh, the brush, um, you know, I don't think it works well, I know you said that it does, but, you know, just example of the snow that just came down, and some people do not have the means to get rid of it, and to get it into small bags is near to virtually impossible, e- especially if you don't have the equipment to do it. You know, I know we had out there thirty-some bags, and we had the whole crew of kids doing it, but, um, you know, some people just don't have it, do we have any way of going back to chipping, do we have any place to put these chips anywhere, any of the property that we have, that we can dispose of, and it only helps make our village cleaner? You know, we, we, our taxes pay for other things for people, I think it's worthwhile to help keep our community nice.
I don't, I don't think that would be a problem, we get a chipper, but we got people that get that, puts five, six, seven loads of brush out there, and you spend all day just chipping that one person.
Well, but they're cleaning up, I know, I know, it is a problem, you know, you get the extremes, but...
We have people cleaning out their backyard, pulling it from a hundred and fifty foot behind their house, out to the roadside, you know?
But they're cleaning up.
It is, I agree with her, it's a real problem, and it's something we should be trying to resolve, because...
Because some people don't, they just pile it in their property, not take it going names.
If you use guys who pass a thing net, two days a week, we could put a pile and burn it, you'd get rid of it a lot faster.
You can't burn it, state law.
Not till it's made.
Village, you can't have a brush pile and burn it, period.
In the village?
In the village, anyways.
You can do brush...
Not the village.
But the village...
You can individually, but not the village.
The village can itself?
That's right, that, that's what's so crazy about this, this... That's right, that, that, that's what's so crazy about this, this law they passed. They took the, the power of the municipalities, they took the power away from them to have these controlled burns and stuff, and now they put it all back on the individuals.
I didn't think individual homeowners within the village's limits were allowed to burn.
You can't, you can't burn anything in the village.
Well, that's what I thought.
The village can't burn, nor can homeowners, anybody else within the village. But in the past, some villages got permits from the DEC, Rouse's Point was one of them, they got a permit from the DEC to burn their brush pile.
But everybody started something junk there.
But can the town burn a brush pile?
No.
No.
Actually, I think I have a copy of that law here.
I just wanted clarification, Mickey, because of the way you ordered it. Was that, I don't want people to think that they individuals could burn.
No, and I understand that, but it's a problem, and it's becoming a greater problem of people stacking it and stacking it and stacking it. And it's visually not appealing, so either we start addressing it of all these mounds of, of.
We can do that, we can make people get rid of it. But I mean, if it's big enough to burn, somebody will take it, it burns wood, if it's not big enough, I mean, we just, we just don't have the resources to do that.
Right.
You know, and like Larry said, you know, we were spending, you know, two or three weeks, all hands on board, to bring this, to pick this stuff up, and then we have no place to bring it. We're in the same boat as the homeowners, there's nowhere to bring it.
Wood chips, we can afford wood chips, yeah.
I know, but the thing is, is like, that's pretty labor intensive also.
Well, it is, but it's, it's a good thing for us to do.
What are you, what are you doing with the chips?
Well, I know, it's a thing, there's gotta be someplace or somebody that wants them.
You can't just dump that stuff. Well, people want cedar chips, or, uh, if you got poplin chips, not many people will want them.
We used to take chips every year for the bazaar, but now that we're paving, we don't need them, but we're always looking for chips before.
When we were chipping, I took a load of chips home and put it around my barn, tried to kill the weeds, I had moles that you wouldn't believe.
I don't know, it's just a concern, and if you look around, there is a difference in people's yards now that we're not doing that, it's just.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you though, where there's a will, there's a way, I mean, I've had a couple of large limbs fall out by tree, we got hit by lightning, uh, the ice storm, I cleaned it all up, and yes, it was tedious, and yes, it was a lot of work, but I managed to get rid of it all, and I think if somebody's industrious, they will get rid of it.
And if they're not, yes, but they may not be getting rid of it properly, and it may not be visually appealing.
Now, if you take it to the dump, does, does the dump burn it?
No, they can't.
What are the dumps?
You gotta haul it to Skyler Falls and they.
Well, you can take it out here, all the way to.
Mores?
We use, we use.
I don't think so, not with.
No, we, we used to.
Well, we took a load there recently, and I've got another one ready to go.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, I thought they had stopped that practice.
But there again, like they charge you by weight there.
Oh, I know, I can just see my.
I can tell you, it, it would be quite costly to bring that stuff there, and that's why we stopped in the first place, because we were actually having to.
Before, when we first started it, we probably did a bucket, you know, like a tractor bucket. I had one person on Elm Street, we spent a day and a half there, and you go, you go once, you come back, and it just kept dragging and dragging. I bet you we took fifteen dump truck loads of brush out of there, you know? And I said enough.
Well, is there any way to limit it, if that, yes, I can see that grow, and I remember up here on, uh, Main Street, that nightmare that was piled. I mean, if we put a limitation like we do on, you know, the one inch or whatever it is now, um, I don't know, it's just.
If, a lot of us just take it and do like their briars off there, you know, and then tie them to things, the ABs. But, I mean, people were bringing out Ford's trees, you know? We have to bring a chainsaw, listen, cut them in half to get them on the truck, then they're all on the truck self.
The brush is, is, it's pretty labor intensive to deal with, because I know I had two big piles after the ice storm, and, uh, it took me quite a while to get that all out of there, and it's, it's not easy to deal with.
What does Rouse's Point do with their chips?
They, they compost them.
They compost them?
They have, uh.
They use them for their sewer, right, or whatever?
No, no, they don't use that anymore, they, they have a, I don't wanna call it a landfill, but it's a compost area where they put all their chips. But they have, uh, in fact, they just, they're doing it now, or they did it last week, or they, they have set days that they, you bring your brush out to the road, and they have two guys that go buy out a chipper and they chip it and they haul it away. It seems to work good for them, they did make a, a smaller area for, uh, leaves, leaves and, uh, grass, clippings and stuff like that, which, again, they, once it's full, they pick it up and they compost it. They've got a large area of land that they, they can do it on, and I don't know where you'd do it here.
Well, I was wanting to the work of Rouse's Point, but.
What's that?
I wanted to work with Rouse's Point to see if they could help with this problem.
Well, they have, they have a chipper, the town has a chipper.
Well, I can investigate that, Tom, do you want to be the person to investigate that? Okay. Very good.
Shared services.
Yeah, it's good that someone.
But, I mean, I, I, if I can add my two cents to this, I have to agree with Amy, I mean, I see this going on in Rouse's Point, and Larry's right, they do. I mean, I know one guy, he cut a tree down and, you know, they hauled off the, the big stuff, but all the branches were there, and the village chipped it, doesn't seem to be an issue for them to chip it, but, yeah, there are large piles, but it does clean up the area. I mean, if you let the brush grow, if, you know, if people have to spend a lot of money to get rid of it, they're not gonna do it, so then you're gonna get the brush, so.
Right.
Depends what you want.
Some people don't have the means to move it either.
I think if we do do it, we need to put a limit on how much, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, I think we need to go on as far as we can here, Tom's gonna look into it, come back with a suggestion for us, so, very good, very good, Amy. Okay, uh.
Okay, I have one more question from there. Sorry, it'll be quick, uh, have you devised a plan yet for sidewalks? Are there any sidewalks we're gonna try and attempt?
Uh, a bunch down Elm Street.
Okay, and are there any that can be addressed before the bazaar, are there any that are dangerous before this parade?
We went around, knocked down some shut offs and stuff.
Okay. Especially the parade route, you know, make sure the people are gonna be.
Well, that's why I'm waiting until after, I'll patch the holes again on Elm Street, because that's where the parade's going and across the bridge.
Right.
But as soon as the, the parade's done with, that's gonna be a lot of time consuming right there, that, I got gas lines to go across the road, I don't know how, how deep they're in, or. So, that curve, I don't know how deep that curve, and that curve has been there, I don't.
And does the county have any plans of fixing, or is it, is the bridge Elm, the Elm Bridge?
Belongs to the county.
Have they said, have they planned fixing some of these major potholes?
Well, these are going through, but.
They have pretty rough there.
If it's not done, we're gonna, we're gonna patch them.
Okay. And then, do they reimburse us?
I, I think turn our streets is a big reverse, reverse method.
Oh, they, okay. Okay, I have no more questions.
Okay, Juanita, could you read the first one?
Correspondence from Clinton County Civil Service regarding updated rules and classifications. Correspondence from Burner Financial regarding healthcare reform. Correspondence from Clinton County Real Property Office regarding exempt impact report. Correspondence from New York State DC regarding annual wastewater treatment plant inspection report. Correspondence from Michael and Kathleen Ducat regarding annexation into the village of Champlain. Mental to the Board from Code Officer Tetra regarding unsafe buildings and structures violation at thirteen, Thirty-Six Moore Street. Correspondence from St. Mary's Church regarding financial donation for Memorial Day Parade. Correspondence from World Warehouse and Distribution regarding one-time sewer credit and a memo from Deputy Clerk Barcom. Memo from Deputy Clerk Barcom regarding selling of buyout properties. Correspondence from Clinton County Health and Primary regarding training on complete streets, planning for pedestrians and life clips. Correspondence from Clinton County Health and Primary regarding the two thousand ten annual water system inspection report. Thank you letter to Barbara Jarvis, Department of Service on the zoning board. Letter to American Legion House Seven Sixty-Seven Auxiliary and Proclamation for their annual buddy poppy sales.
Okay, thank you, Juanita. Just kinda like to, uh, then, uh, have the board approve this proclamation that we're sending for buddy poppies, could you read that, Juanita, do you have a copy or anything here?
Proclamation whereas the annual sale of buddy poppies by veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since nineteen twenty-two. And whereas VFW buddy poppies are assembled with disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fund raising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of the disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas basic purchase of the annual sale of buddy poppies by veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Therefore, I Jeffrey P. Moore, Mayor of the Village Champlain, do hereby urge citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of buddy poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation and sacrifice of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a buddy poppy as a new evidence of our gratitude to the men of this country who have risked their lives in defense of freedoms, which we continue to enjoy as American citizens.
Is there something I can make a motion to approve that proclamation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
You got one, Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, all the favors, the same fighters, aye, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, move on to old business, uh, we have, uh, the GSA meter pit, it looks like we're finally ready to start moving forward on this. We don't have all our codes together or whatever, but I would like to have us have a motion to, uh, expend up to a certain amount, so that if we can get a a meter pit, precast meter pit before the next meeting, that we would be able to do that, Larry, how much do you think we would need?
You gotta remember, I'd like to add on a backfill.
Yes, we do, we just need a ceiling where we can go over.
I didn't, I didn't get a quote on the, the backfill, uh, on the meter pit itself, I'd like to go for three grand.
What's wrong with the two thousand dollar one?
Well. Because if I do that, that way I'll try to get the meter pit and the backfill for under that price. So, I know an eight-inch meter compound with a backfill is twelve thousand dollars. So if I can get a backfill to put on rate on this meter, I don't think it costs more than a thousand dollars.
Yeah, cause we've already got.
We already have the meter, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so like, uh, Tom, would you please?
For three thousand? Can you make a motion?
Well, if you have some left, uh, Larry, or?
Well.
Well, I, I mean, we would like to get started on this.
Well, even if thirty-five hundred is safe. But sticking up.
I mean, if you can get it for less, great.
Well, I mean, I, we know you do that, so.
Well, why don't you give me enough, and if it's more than what I asked for?
Yeah, you're not spending.
I, I won't spend it, I, I'm gonna.
No, no tool, no.
But I don't know, because.
The check's in the mail.
Yeah, exactly.
The box, the box I got this quote on was for the meter, and it would give me eight inches on each side, hook the cup ones up, but I have to put that backfill in there, so that means I have to go with a longer box. So, I'd go, I'd go with three thousand for the box and add for whatever, I could find out what the check valve is, but I don't.
Oh, you want to take it?
No, it's, it, that's a six inch.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we go with the, the three thousand dollars, we?
Well, but if it's not enough, should we make a four thousand?
Maybe so, be another one.
Yeah, I don't know how much this.
I'd agree with Amy, go with four thousand.
I mean, I got a, I got a quote for a little over two thousand dollars for a box, and I got another one for sixty-two hundred dollars, so.
Well, we really, this has been out there for ever.
Did this come out of this year's money, too, or next year's?
We, we, we have to put it in, so, we have to put it.
Well, wouldn't it be prudent, though, to do the four thousand, and then if you only spend three thousand, great?
Yeah.
I hate to see it get held up for another month.
I, I like, yeah, I like to have enough and, and then, you know?
Okay, you want to read the motion?
I haven't really started it.
These guys, these guys have to approve it to have this man, but I, I can't tell you how much the, that check valve's gonna be.
Well, I don't wanna see it get held another month either.
No, I, I have the hole already dug.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's not.
Definitely gotta put the, uh, the pit in.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to approve spending up to four thousand dollars for the meter pit and a backfill.
In the backfill, and if something else, if it is more, whatever, we'll have to call emergency, danger, but I'll, I'll do the best I can.
Do better than that.
You're pretty good at that.
Second.
Okay, and I need to further discussion? No, Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Gary?
Aye.
Any more? Aye. Okay, now have, we have a request for donation to help with the parade. Uh, from St. Mary's, does anyone wish to take action on this?
I'd like to make a motion that we help with the expense of the parade. Uh, we have fifteen hundred for Village Fest, is that what it is? Uh, hold on, I'll make a good motion one second. Yeah, we, we, for next year, we have put it in.
New budget.
New budget money.
What about the Village Fest in the fall, or do you usually have that one come down?
Yeah, the number that's up here, Culture Recreation. Well, you know, we do have parks, contractual, why do we still have money there? On A seventy-one ten point four.
Why do we still have money in there?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think first.
Is that, well, are, first, because we could use some of that money.
Okay, first, we need a, we need a, a motion and a second before we.
Get a discussion.
Okay, I make a motion, but I don't, I don't know how much money to put, say, I mean. So it wouldn't be a very specific motion, till I know financially. Okay, I make a motion that we give two thousand dollars to assist in the parade.
Okay, and we have a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
And we have discussion.
So we, community beautification, we have thirty dollars and sixty-eight cents left, we could use some from there. But the, uh, boat launch and parks, we've got four thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars there, can we use that money? Okay.
The only thing I'd like to do, I like to extend that boat ramp out a little more, because people seem to be backing off it.
Yeah.
Breaking their trailers.
Breaking their trailers.
Yeah, we need to fix that.
And I like, and I like to get a sign, enter at your own risk, so, something to put on there.
That's a good idea.
Until the villagers are responsible.
Right. What about Juanita, A seven nine eight nine point four Village Fest? There's a thousand thirty-two dollars left in that? What, what do we have?
That, what we did is blast through the budget, two thousand dollars for quad celebration that we had, well, we got reimbursed.
So this is.
All about this amount.
So we still got thousands of dollars left in there?
How much do you think would cost to extend that boat launch, because that is important?
It's make the cement pad and slide it in.
Ballpark? But that's not the.
I guess I, I would be in agreement with that for up to a thousand, but I, I really would hesitate to go much more than that, because I think we have that covered that. I, I wouldn't really want to go into next year's funds at this time, I don't know how to play the feels on that, but.
Well, right, so did we budget five thousand again for next year? Under Parks and Recreation, anybody know?
I believe that, that the law one comes out of that, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's, I, I really hate to delve too deeply into that.
No, but this is this year's money, we still have forty-three ninety-eight, forty-four hundred dollars for thirty more days, not even thirty days, for fifteen days.
Yeah, it's not free money, no. It's like, you know, it's there.
Well, I'm not saying it's free, but.
Split the difference with her and get on with it.
Because whatever rolls over to fun bounce, we still have to take sixty-some odd thousand out of that, so we can.
Right.
For the.
Well, I, I think a thousand dollars is a substantial donation towards the parade.
Very similar to what we did last year.
Yeah, I think so, a little over a thousand on that.
We had help with that.
Fifteen hundred was the reimbursement we got for the KFC dinner.
That was a.
From the grant, and we paid, paid Gary's with that.
You want to amend your motion, Amy, or you want to rule it out?
How about we do, I'll amend it to one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, it's less than what we did last year. It is a community event, brings everybody into our community.
Well, yes, it's a very good, and there's no doubt about that.
You know, and we need to show off Champlain a little bit more. Mean Mouse's Point spends thousands and thousands of dollars, and that's assisted through their board. And I know they've got a lot more money than we do. But, you know, I don't know, they did ask the town for money as well, so...
Okay, so you want to change your motion?
Yeah, let's change my motion to assist $1,250 towards parade expenses.
We still have, we have a second there, Tom?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any further discussion? If not, Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
Any more ayes?
Okay, I have one more question. Are we gonna add this to our warrant now?
Oh, yeah. If you want to add this year.
If we wanted to come out of this year, we could take it out of... We could take it out of the parks, which has $4,300 on it.
Okay, someone like to make a motion to add that to the warrant?
I make a motion that we amend the warrant, adding the $1,250 for the Saint Mary's parade.
And we have a second?
I'll second.
What call?
A 7110.4. What's payable to Saint Mary's?
Danger.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who have a second on that?
Chombley. Chombley, Chombley.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that? Okay, Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a request from World Warehouse for sewer credit for a leak. In the amount of $600 and $36. Everybody should have a copy of that. And just a reminder to everyone, these are all one-time credits. There isn't a second time. Does anyone wish to take action on this? So we have your, you have...
I make a motion that we give the World Warehouse a one-time credit of $612.36.
And a second? You, Tom?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah.
You go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'll take a second.
I mean, this is a business, how could they not be aware that a toilet had been leaking for three months at 99,000 gallons of water, and this water is going back, and we're paying to process it?
They're still paying for the water.
It's not the first business that's had problems like that.
I know, that's why it's a...
Well, how these work, they pay for the water because we get, they use the water. Whether it went down the drain or not, it...
Well, where's it going?
This is for wastewater.
I understand that, but if it's a leaking toilet, it's still going down and we're processing it. Don't you think? I mean, where's it going unless it's leaking all over the warehouse? They should be flooded by now with 99,000 gallons of water.
Can you answer that question, where the water goes there?
It goes down the drain, and yes, we process it.
So, and this, you know, this is...
I think, I think we have a lot of this happening, we're getting a lot of these. And I think we need to change the credit to a water credit, not a sewer credit. Because we're really hitting the van, costs a lot more to take care of the sewer's water than it does the water, to do the water at the water plant. I mean, you know, $7.58 a thousand, how much is it for water credit? I mean, you don't mind hopping them out a little bit, but I mean, that's a lot of money.
Is that anything, Jeff, that's written in our laws that would give a sewer credit versus a water credit?
No, this is all at the pleasure of the board.
Because if you're gonna...
Whether you want to get credit at all, or you want to get the parch credit, credit on whatever, it's...
Okay, and I don't have a problem with changing that to the water, but we need to be consistent with it.
Well, to be consistent, my suggestion would be that you change the sewer credit. Because that's the way we've always done it in the past. And I think we have done this before where we set a, you know, set an amount there instead of the entire bill could be a marshal of the bill. Like I said, it's at the pleasure of the board if they want to do.
And you've got 99,000 gallons, and you pay credit for $81,000 sewer.
Which is how much money, what does that translate into?
Well, and like you said, it went down the drain, and we processed it anyway.
And then the water's $298.
Yeah, well, that's what we have to weigh out there.
Sometimes what's happened in the past, couple things, if somebody leaves a hole running out in the lawn, and then they ask for a sewer credit, that's not going in the sewer.
Right.
But this has kind of gotten out of hand a little bit, I think.
You know, and you can see, you know, folks that go away for the winter and something happens, that, you know, they don't have any...
Usually if a pipe bursts in a house, it goes in the cellar, and it sub pumps it out.
What, where's their letter? I just had it in front of me. How did they word it? Or they realized to them, how long?
It's a number in between the one and the two. $600 as well. Or done, whatever you did, people feel. I guess, we have seen a lot of these out there, and I know, like, we do that with school, where they fill a swimming pool, obviously that doesn't go down the drain, so, yes, they should get a sewer credit because they didn't, but this is different.
Well, we had that one, and there was a set price on it.
Well, what would it be if we had credit on the water?
Well, water's $298,000, sewer's $444,000 right now. And sewer's going up, I think to $6,000.
Looking at a dollar forty-six more.
You know, twice as much.
Five hundred fifty less, right?
It would make, you know, more sense to give them a water credit, to me, if it's this type of a thing where it's kind of neglect on their part, really.
Got a calculator, what's the credit gonna be if we gave them credit on the water for this?
Yeah, I'm kind of torn on that.
Yeah, maybe it costs you money to process this. How much of this can you keep giving away?
Why we pay for it. But as you said, we have offered it to other businesses.
But they could turn it into their insurance.
I think the problem here is, when it started out, it was for stuff like a leaky garden hose.
Right.
Have a whole rock chair.
Or something like a swimming pool. Right.
Yeah, it kind of, that kind of makes sense.
But this, we're still paying for it, so we're asking the taxpayers to pick up.
So, it's like...
But the problem is, we've kind of set some precedents to it.
Yeah, so either you continue doing it, or you stop doing it. I know. You can't do it both ways.
I mean, you go to the gas station, you fill your car up, and the nozzle sticks, and you're not watching, it goes in the ground, you pay for what's on the phone.
We've had that happen.
Well, just to clear it up for everybody, though, that is in the book, on the books, that you can do this. It's at the pleasure of the board, whether you do it at all, whether you do it partially, whatever, and I guess that's... They're requesting that we look at it, and that's up to you as individuals.
Well, Donna's figuring out the water.
Another thing you have, you have people that have house strewers and stuff, they go away, they leave their water, in the wintertime, leave your water running most of the time. I've been in places where the meters turn, and I've been in a place where they had hot water runs steady to keep the refrigerant freezing, you know?
And I can understand they're doing that, but I wouldn't expect that they should ask for a credit.
Water, commercial water is $4.48 per thousand, which would be $362.88. So that's a difference of $249.48 compared to what, giving them the sewer credit instead.
Because it still went down the sewer, so in this case, you know...
Well, I just have one word of caution to everybody here, though. I mean, if you're gonna give people credit for water that they waste, that you may have a lineup outside the door. Just a thought, but...
Have they rectified the problem?
Yeah, the John doctor have come in a letter, yes.
I don't know how people don't hear their toilet running, because it's either going in a bowl, or you can hear it go over the back.
My feeling on this is...
I don't know.
No. Shouldn't give them anything. Put the water on the ground, I mean, what can I say? You know, if any one of us have a leaky toilet, I, you know, unless we were away, it was... Even then, it's kind of questionable, but, I don't know, that's just my opinion, but I think...
Is this one of the warehouses that's in operation? Is Cottley's still in operation? Well, there really is no question, you're there. You hear a leak, you call somebody.
Okay, well, we need to take action on the original motion, which was to give them a sewer credit, so... Justice Chombley?
I hate to renege on my motion, but you are correct. I mean, they did three months of having a toilet run.
Well, we've had that before.
Yes, we have.
Well, we need to roll down this.
Go for a second, will you?
Okay, well, we made a motion to pay all of it, so we need to act on that motion first, or anything else. So, Kim?
Well, I hate to pay the whole thing now. Can I retract my motion?
No.
No?
We just hold on this motion, you can make a motion after this one's gone down.
You can make an motion after, whatever, but for this motion, we have to act on this one.
And I've already put in a motion to pay it.
Doesn't matter, it does make your vote.
Right.
Yeah. Just motion.
So I added my motion the same, then?
Right, yeah, we have to act on the one.
Okay. Oh. Aye.
Okay, Tom?
Nay.
Nay.
Myself, nay. Okay, so what action, if any, do we want to pay?
Trying to move what we set, I said, with the restaurant, the percentage of that.
I don't think it was a percentage, I think you give it, I think just that I would have...
We came up with a number.
Just the number, yeah.
It's a number, incorrect.
Well, it's a reason there's this huge...
There's a change.
The toilet?
$200,000.
Does anyone wish to take any action at all?
No, did we need to set an precedent, we don't take action on it, and we look at each case individually?
Yeah, can we table this to next month?
We sure can.
Well, I make a motion to table it to next month, please.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Second, all in finger.
Aye.
I have a request, Donna, at...
Your motion is carried.
Oh, I'm sorry, at the time that you have available. To give us a list of what businesses we have credited, what amount, and why.
That's a good idea.
So we can have a picture here, and maybe we need to set a standard.
No, I don't want all the correspondence, so maybe a spreadsheet.
Well, no, just a list.
Yeah, a spreadsheet.
Oh, yeah, not correspondence, spreadsheet, yes. No, it'll take me a little bit to compile, but that's fine. And, I mean, we don't have to go back 15 years. Friday.
Okay, to keep things moving. We need to approve insurance for Juanita and Larry for the upcoming year. Larry, he would breathe under Teamster Insurance, and Juanita would stay under Blue Cross Blue Shield HMO. We may have an issue with the dental, but for now, I'd like to have a motion to approve those insurances so they'll have at the end of the month.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, Tom? Any discussion? Not, Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
Okay, and one other loose end that we had out there, I didn't forget your name. Oh, two other names, sorry. In our investigations on the pump house property, we found out we had a few loose ends. Our attorney, Dave Marshall, suggested we were unable to locate an abstract, so whatever, for whatever purposes we may ever use that land for up there, I think a good place to start is getting an abstract done. That would be the cheapest thing to do at this point. I mean, if at some point you wanted to sell it or whatever, you may end up with a survey or whatever, but I think an abstract would be a good place to start, probably costs about $500 or $600. It's, goes way back there, so...
Is this back where the pig farm is?
Yeah, in that direction.
Before that, but...
Yeah, I know, before that.
Where the Fox...
But anyway, if we were to proceed with any purposes or uses up there, I think that would be where we would have to start. When we look back, we couldn't find anything on that. Dave did look back quite a ways, there was some, rents were done, some land changed hands here and there, and I think an abstract would be a good place to start, and it won't be too costly, it would have closed, so... I would entertain a motion to do an abstract on that property, so we know what's what up there.
So moved.
All right, is there any discussion? I don't have a price on that, but they generally run, you know, $300, $400, $500. Should we set a, I don't know, I guess I should have set it now. Well, let's just do it, because we need to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't get any holes from anybody, so it'd be hard to set up.
Okay, so, since there's no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. And now, back to you.
Me?
Did anyone wish to take action on this GPS issue? We've really been, I guess it should have been on the old business, but it's kind of a loose end out there. Does anybody want to do anything with the...
Well, I'd like to make a motion to have this company reinstall the proper devices that's no expense to us, to see if they can rectify the situation. No loss on our part to do so.
Well, okay, so you want to make a motion?
Yes. That we pursue this and have them correct the problem.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Tom, discussion?
Okay, what, fill me back in on where we're at with this, because...
Well, the last correspondence probably been two or three months from her, and she's just saying, what is happening? We want to correct the situation. She gave us a test model, I put it on my car. I drove all over Champlain, I drove up to the border. I actually drove to Massachusetts and packed with this on my car. It tracked me everywhere I went. It's pinging into a Canadian tower as opposed to pinging off the American towers. They did a lot of testing on this because they're getting more and more people on the Canadian border, and they want the business. So, we have already paid for a whole year's service, which they're not charging us for, so we would get a year's service without a price, you know, without further charge, okay? So whenever they finally get the new thing in, our service contract picks up from that point, because it never has worked. And we paid for a year plus all the devices. So they're willing to take out the old devices, put in the correct devices, all at their expense, and also not charge us for the service.
Okay.
So...
Was there ever an option of getting money back on the device?
No. No.
How much is the service contract up until the free year?
I'm sorry, say again?
We've already been reimbursed.
For a portion, yes, we got reimbursed the service, right, everything but the service. We're reimbursed on the units.
Everything but the one year's payment.
Right.
They had a gentleman come right up here in the back, and the plow truck never worked from day one.
No, it was a problem.
I mean, we spent a bunch of money, I took it out and put it right in the windshield.
Well, and they reimbursed us for all of that.
Yes.
I mean, they reimbursed, I mean, so, I mean, this company has done everything to try and work with us. I think it's only fair that we give them the opportunity to earn their business. I mean, they really, I mean, how many companies do that? They paid for all of our expenses at Smith &amp; Sons.
Well, okay, I guess, I think I want to echo what Kevin Thomas was probably thinking, like, we definitely don't want to put any more money in this.
Exactly.
Only as far as when it's free, because we really didn't get any service.
Well, I want to know what ben, what benefit are we going to get out of this?
Uh, probably.
Well, your tracking devices.
Probably not much. I, I would say you take what's free and if, and then I, I wouldn't continue with it myself, but, well, we could see what if we derive any benefit from it, but my, my suspicion is not much.
My only fear is, and is they screw something up. And we have a warranty issue with the vehicle.
No.
That's my fear.
I, I'm, the white truck, it was hooked up in the white truck and I think Jeff came in one day, somebody was looking for me and I was out back and when Juanita got on, they said I was still in Shady Z. I had went to plastic water samples, but I lost the four-wheel drive, the, the sensors, the electronic sensor, whatever. It kept making the truck go into four-wheel drive and I took it to Shady Z. It was covered under warranty. And then it took, and the radio would come on, the radio would go out, and every once in a while you hear beep. And I, I told, I unplugged it. It's unplugged in the truck because I would lose the radio. I lost all of, they had to put a whole new control panel for the lights and the dash and stuff. I didn't know how to hook them up. We took them there and had them hook them on. At Peterbilt, so. I mean, that was covered under warranty when that happened, so.
So it was on the white pickup?
The white, the new pickup. And the guy said it's a good thing it didn't go into, into low four-wheel drive because it was took the transmission out.
Should we have, give them a shot, like, on one vehicle and see if it works before we install and everything?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's, yeah, that's a good point, Kim. I hadn't thought of that.
That's, that's my fear and, and I only, I go back to a, a friend of ours who had a automatic starter that screwed up their entire vehicle and they had to have it taken out. And the amount of money that we spend on these vehicles, I would hate to see something happen and have the truck company say, I'm sorry, your warranty is no good because you put something like this into it.
Well, you know, I can ask them that. I mean, what kind of warranty do they have for, you know, the installation and it messing things up?
But that's not going to do us any good if then something happens that they're not going to go good for and then the truck company is going to fix.
I don't know what kind the state police have, but somebody hit the hydrant at the top of, uh, Third Street and South Street and took the nozzle off it. And I had the, the trooper come and he, they had the computer with it, it all set up in the, in the thing. And he could not get a reading right there if you want, because you have to do it all on the computer. I had to measure from the, the corner of the road to the hydrant to tell him how many feet it was because it wouldn't pick up at that signal rate there.
As well as communication.
Well, you know, whoever has it, you know.
Well, you want to table this to the next meeting? Any, if you can find out more information on that? I guess I, I hadn't really considered that, but that's a, a good point, Kim. I, I really wouldn't want to damage our own vehicles.
No, I, I wouldn't put it in the, in the plow truck. I'm sorry, sorry.
So you want to, would you be willing to check on that?
Yeah, no problem.
Do you want to, uh, withdraw your motion and, and make motion to table that for next meeting? I know.
Sure.
I promise I won't forget it.
Table to next meeting.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, I hate to do this, but I, I, Kim and I have, just need to talk with everybody in executive session for just a brief moment.
Oh, before we do that, though, we need to address Marie McKinnon.
Right.
Okay. Um, you went back and did a reading. Did you find out what the, she's averaging to you?
I gave a serena.
The only reading I got was done a while ago. Row was three weeks ago.
And I, and I think it will due to be read again tomorrow on the law.
Right, tomorrow. Uh, that reading they did, I believe she was three thousand gallons of water, which would average out to about nine, ten, nine thousand gallons of water per quarter, nine to ten thousand, and that would be about right for two people.
Okay, so nine thousand per quarter and so what does that work out?
I think we were billing her for five thousand. So, but actually-
Sorry, I meant meaning I didn't mean to answer that. I thought you got to a little bit.
Um, you know, researching it back over the years, unfortunately, which actually went through her meter would be about what she really would have used for two people. Actually, probably even a little bit more.
Okay, well, what we were trying to do with figuring this out is, um, she needs to figure out how much she can pay per month with what her bill is going to be. I mean, she's on a fixed income, so, you know, she wants to set up a payment with us, but that's why we wanted to get a reading so she can get an idea of what that's going to be.
Well, I don't know what her reading, the next reading will be. I would say probably to be on the safe side, probably about ten thousand gallons.
Will you read that again tomorrow instead of now? Okay, just let me know and we can work out something with her to set up what she can pay.
Okay, I'll show you, in case we have, have one more item, like, which I forgot, Kim pointed out. We have four requests to, uh, carry over vacation time. I think I already was copied on this. So we need to take action on this. I think what we've done in the past is, is set a time limit, I believe, first of the year to use up these days.
But last year, we stated that we were no longer carrying over.
That was not in the minutes I checked. There was no motion in that effect.
My-
You had to use it by the end of December.
End of the year.
But we said that's what's going to be the last year for doing that.
I think we discussed that. I don't know what we did about it, but I do, I do remember that.
Then we need to put in for every employee and not just some employees because every employee on the book has time.
Well, one thing you can get, Harvey has his time made up for the rest of the year. He won't have any time left.
Yeah, this is everybody except for one, I believe.
So, four, two of them. And I couldn't tell which it was. Was it, is it Jimmy or Karen?
No, Karen.
Woody.
Okay, so Jimmy's going to use up all of his hours?
Yep.
And Woody's going to use up his-
Woody's got the last week of this month off.
Okay, as of four eighteen, uh, do we have more current?
Five two.
That's five two.
Oh, okay. What were we at at five two?
Fifty-six vacation, forty-four point seventy-five sick.
And he's going to use up two full weeks in the last two weeks of time?
Woody did two full weeks.
The sick time probably automatically carries over.
Okay.
Yeah, that really
Yeah. That's, the sick time's not an issue.
All the vacation plus one day.
It's your personal, it's your optional holidays and your vacation time.
Okay.
So the sick time really shouldn't be under the question.
No.
No.
Okay.
Really, it's-
I'm, I'm going to use a bunch of mine before the end of the
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so his hours are going to be gone.
Woody's will be gone.
It's just that the hours are there now, they're not used, so.
Jimmy's is going to be gone, yeah.
You know, they're, yeah. You can't deduct what hasn't been taken.
Okay. I, I think that we need to get a little bit better on using up our time because this does you know. Anyway, everyone should be paid for what they, they burned. I'm, I'm not saying that. We just need to come up with a better plan.
Well, this happens in any industry, though.
Yeah.
True, but, well, here's an option, Amy, and I, I hear you, what you're saying. Maybe we should make that these have to be taken within the first three months instead of the first six months. Because we really, you know.
The first three months are our busiest time.
Yeah, that's true.
You know.
And that might be why we extended it to six months.
You're right. Well, that was a thought.
And, and can we, or possibly consider the option of paying out for it at the end? It's a six, six of one, half dozen of the other. They take the time without pay or we?
Well, not for the union people.
Well, I think part of what happened, Woody's not an issue this year, but when he was superintendent, he didn't take any time. So he had built up a lot of time over a year and a half, two years, and then it all kind of kicked in. And then same thing with Larry. He hadn't taken much time because of that this year, but, you know, he's going to use up most of it.
I mean, one had a hundred and fifty-four hours on it.
Right, there was a lot of time, but now-
They were getting to go out after the first of June, so they got their full all their holidays and stuff, and then come June first, they had that, so.
Well, I think there's two issues here. One, I think we need to carry these days over. The other issue is what Amy brought up, that, you know, we need to look at, do we want to allow this next year? I mean, we're, we're into officiating, but, I know we keep saying that, but I guess Amy will probably forget about it.
Better, you know.
But anyway, uh-
Because a lot of industry right now is going to, you lose, use it or you lose it, unfortunately.
Did we make a motion on this before?
Yeah, we did.
We have a motion?
We did.
There's no motion on it.
I don't think we did.
Oh, sorry.
Kim, want to make a motion to, uh, carry these days over until December thirty-first?
I make a motion for the four employees-
Oh, two, December thirty-first, I'm sorry.
Okay. I make a motion for the four employees that submitted, uh, requests to have, um, vacation time carried over, that we allow them to carry it over until December thirty-first, two thousand and ten.
Do we include holiday?
Uh, you should include your optional holiday.
Including their optional holiday.
Yeah. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Uh, any further discussion? And if not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I'd like to make a motion to the new executive session, just to date everybody on where we are in the contract.
You can also have the, um, Marie McKinnon.
Yeah, we can go back and do that.
Your new motion?
Second.
Second by Amy, all in favor? Okay, let me get very brief. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
There is really a whole lot here, but it's
I put this on my computer.